All right, welcome everyone. We've got about an even distribution online, 15, and there's about 16 in the room. And welcome everyone to the Democratic Club of Sunnyvale meeting of August 17th, 2024, in which we will be doing endorsements for school board. Three different races, three different districts, and so welcome you all. Martin, would you like to give a brief overview of the day?
Yes, sure. There are. Okay, yeah, there are three different races. Okay, today we'll be holding interviews for the four, three different races. Santa Clara County Board of Education trustee area one, there was one Democratic candidate and one Republican candidate. We are of course interviewing the Democrat. Sorry, one declined to state, Grace Ma, which declined to state at some point in last prayers. Anyway, one Democrat, one declined to state candidate. We'll be doing Fremont Union High School District trustee area two, there is one Democratic candidate, Pat Carpio Aguilar, who will be interviewing. And there is one Republican candidate for Cupertino Union School District. This is at large, everybody is at large. There are five Democratic candidates, four of whom will be appearing today. I attempted to contact all of the candidates and never heard back from one of them. And this is, and for this one, there are two candidates will be, there are five Democratic candidates. And this one is actually two, will actually be voting for two candidates. So because there are two candidates to be elected. So that ballot is vote for two candidates for all of our races. You need 60%. When we do the voting, there will be six. Okay, so how it works, we will hear from all the candidates for all the offices and then there will be discussion, a private discussion for club members only after we get through all of the interviews. And then we'll be voting, the voting forms as noted are open, but please do not, we recommend and encourage you to not vote until you've heard from all the candidates and you've heard the discussion on the candidates. There's a 60% is, 60% vote is required for endorsement. For the ones where there's just one Democrat, it's just a, should we endorse yes or no? That requires 60%. If there's, for the one that's more than, for the one for Cupertino Union, we vote for two candidates. If we, everyone votes for two candidates, well, you only have to vote, you don't have to vote for two. You can also vote for one, you could vote for no endorsement. Please don't vote for one candidate and no endorsement. That's annoying. It means I have to delete your no endorsement vote manually. Also, please don't try to be sneaky and vote for more than two. Again, the Google form will let you do this. I will not let you do this however, and I will just delete your ballot as invalid. So, but you need six, but if, how that works is that if the two candidates get 60%, then cool, we have an endorsement. I don't think it's mathematically possible for more than two candidates to get 60% on the first ballot. The, if only one candidate or less than one gets, or zero, one gets 60%, then we get to do elimination rounds and we can deal with that if it happens. So that's the very brief overview. I would like to get the interview started at this point. So if you have any questions, we can deal with them when we get to the discussion period in about two hours.
Thanks, Martin. All right, yes, and one of our rules is that all the the interviews are open to the public except for the other candidates and their paid staff or family members. All right. We're going to be starting with Cupertino Union School District and our first candidate is Lakshmi Sharma. And she is here in the room. Welcome Lakshmi. It's good to see you. You can actually come sit in the chair. Yeah.
Thank you, everyone. Okay. And when I'm looking here, I'm looking outside as well. If I'm the person, okay, and that's the direction. That's good. It's gonna be your microphone. And I'm going to be asking the questions.
Okay. Hello. Yeah. Oh, so I am the starting person and this is my first time doing something like that ever in life. So wow. Okay. Yeah.
That's better. All right. And this is being recorded. That's okay. All right. And our format is to have a one-minute opening statement, followed by, there are six questions, which you've seen in advance, that those each have two-minute response times. And then there is a lightning round of four questions, which you have not seen, none of the other candidates have seen either. And it's only 30 seconds. It's gonna go fast.
Okay. Am I allowed to use my laptop when I have responses?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Can I? Okay. Cause yeah, I've taken notes. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for allowing it. Yeah.
All right. And Martin will be taking, doing the time. So he's got the timer on there. All right. And when you're ready, you can give your one-minute opening statement.
Okay, I'm ready. I'm Lakshmi Sharma. I'm your candidate for governing board member. Position for Cupertino Union School District is my first time trying something like this. So why am I running and who am I? I am business executive for 26 plus years. I've lived all my life in United States in CUSD slash FHSD area, which is basically 23 years. Two years in Cupertino, 10 years in West San Jose and 10 years in Saratoga. I have two kids who have gone through the system here like Portal, Eisenhoor, Miller and Lindbrook. I have volunteered for past 21 years of my life in this country, in every school, which my schools, you know, my students, my family has been. I am a product of education. I am where I am just because of education. And I want to give back to education every single day of my life, whether it is at work, whether anywhere. And yeah, that's exciting to me and to be able to contribute to education in this, you know, in this boat. Yeah.
Right. Thank you. Terrific timing. All right. So we'll now move into the two-minute response question. The first question is, how does the district demonstrate and support diversity, equity and inclusion? And how should they?
Okay. District, again, I'm a big proud member of this community. I have seen a lot of advantage of staying in this community. And so how it is doing already. So there are three things. So if you look at the, you know, over past 30-plus years of data, the ethnic diversity or ethnic diversity has increased quite, you know, distinctively, like Asian population increasing, Hispanic population increasing, white population decreasing. So I'm aware of those changes that have happened, but also I'm very proud of how district has supported it. Look at like Nimitz supporting like, you know, the new principal coming in and resources to, you know, engage more, you know, parents who are not English-speaking parents and then connecting them with the rest of the community. And then also, you know, in terms of number of students, the challenges that are happening. So there are already great things in place, whether it is emotional learning, whether it is artistic learning, STEM learning. We are very proud, but there are opportunities because of the distribution of the number of students in the school. There's a school like Stokelmeier with thousand students and there are two schools like, you know, Blue Hills and like others, who have relatively less, less number of students because of the known reasons, right? Because there are local pockets of, you know, families who tend to stay in those, you know, areas. So how do we continue to add more kind of, you know, measures and, you know, programs so that we continue to drive diversity from number of students per school perspective and newer languages and newer programs to address the cultural and, you know, neurodivergent or special aid skills. I've also learned that in, you know, in California, it seems like CUSD has the, the most number of special aid students. So I'm very proud that recently we have hired a lot more permanent teachers in that, in that space. But then what else can we do? Can we continue to maintain those standards for special aid, languages, cultural and also, you know? Thank you. That was about the number of students per school.
All right. Thank you so much. The second question, regarding sexual assault, harassment and racism in our society, what policies have worked to address these evils and promote a safe learning environment for our children? What other policies might be needed to address current issues?
Think doesn't matter what issue it is, whether it is sexual harassment, whether it is bullying. I want to make sure, I want to say one thing over and over in every response is that we have to create a safe space for students to talk to their parents and teachers in school. So always having, you know, always having that trusted adult in life, whether that's a teacher or somebody at school or outside, that's really important. So, and being a Hindu, like, you know, I've seen recently like what's happening in Bangladesh and other places. So there is, there is a need for us to educate students and families right from the beginning. But again, I'm very proud that, you know, CUSD has like, you know, PBS, social emotional learning programs. We also have, you know, the board policy 6144, which, which kind of empowers students and parents and families to even discuss controversial issues. And I go back to that, everything starts from acknowledging. If we can acknowledge those issues and if we can talk about them and teach the students right from the beginning that it is okay for them to be who they are and be, you know, recognize their identity, being able to just communicate those issues with supported policies which are in place, to be honest, and their programs through PBS, as I mentioned, my kids have been, you know, they have used it. And they have been, they have been subjected to certain violence related to racial discrimination I have myself been. So starting from, you know, recognizing it and already existing policies, but creating six, I believe like elementary and middle are the places. Where the most important is that you educate that it is okay to be who you are and it is okay to be share your opinion in a safe environment with people you can trust. So, and as I said, there are existing programs, but we could do more to continue to educate and also bring parents into that, community into that. There is no holistic education without parents and community, you know, not being part of it.
Okay, thank you. The next question is, what criteria would you use to evaluate literature and textbooks used in the curriculum?
You know, it's very hard to be writing a curriculum. I just did a Stanford course, like, you know, it took me four months to just write eight classes. So first of all, kudos, congratulations. Thank you very much to everyone who participates in writing anything to do with curriculum. It's very hard. Especially for elementary and middle when, and with the diversity that we have in our region, special ed like languages, it's hard. So first of all, thank you and congratulations. Thank you for what you do. And what else could be done? You know, just as I said, like as our population diversity is increasing, as languages are increasing, as our, you know, social diversion needs are increasing in this, in this area. We partnering with like, you know, each of them, taking each of those special, say areas as on its own and not bundling them as, hey, we have, we are really good and so, you know, special aid or inclusion and diversity. I believe each specific area from a curriculum and text perspective need to be considered on its own. For example, right? So we are, we are talking about like, there was a response about like digital, you know, awareness or bullying. So, so that's a big topic. And certain schools like P, as part of PE, you teach them, you bring some special people, they tell you this is cyber bullying or this is like, you know, in-person bullying. But then each of them, they are not physical education. They are like very important topic, like our kids are on phones, like, you know, post-COVID, like that's their mechanism of learning. So my, my one request and my one kind of guidance would be that, how do we treat each small area to be its own, you know, own kind of area? And then take help from specialist in those areas to drive at least one of them to, you know, to holistic kind of outcome.
Okay, thank you. Next is, what should the district do to ensure every student is treated equally in terms of facilities and educational experience?
Infrastructure is a, you know, is very important to me. I'm using that word because I'm part of a program called Lexi. I'm part of a Lindbrook Excellence in Education Board. So what we do, we raise funds to just, you know, improve the infrastructure of the school. While school gets a lot of money and funding from different places, but sometimes, you know, depending on what the school is good at, if it is STEM, we tend to be really good in providing like AP programs or like, you know, science, hands-on science. For me, like equality comes from like understanding each student, like not everybody wants to be a scientist, not everybody wants to be a teacher, right? Or any good profession, mechanics, you know, and construction and builders. So what, how do we kind of bring those programs and support the school infrastructure? To first of all, to offer those opportunities, maybe a garden, building a garden, maybe kind of doing a workshop, like wood workshop, which is offered in middle schools, but not, and high school, but not so much, let's say, in elementary school. So to me, diversity starts from supporting infrastructure, supporting programs, bringing programs that are addressing or covering not just few spectrums of education, but also like, you know, other areas that we sometimes tend to kind of, you know, not focus on. And, and I have personally kind of as part of Lexi and, and this needs money, right? So money, no matter how much money you save, you know, still get through funds and PTS and whatnot, we, we still would need some kind of bonds and measures and a bigger kind of infrastructure or, you know, investment. So the bonds that we are talking about, which will go towards just the programs and the school and infrastructure. I believe those are important. So, and we should, we should absolutely kind of work towards that. And so there is one, one thing like which I've seen that like, you know, access to disabled students and teachers or even community. I see that not being available in all places. I was, can I just, 20 seconds quick? So I was on, okay. Thank you. Sounds good. Thank you.
You can say, mix it in with another, another response. Okay. Next is bullying in schools is an ongoing problem. What can be done to ensure that students are safe on school grounds in and out of class?
And kind of, I touched it before, but bullying, like I, one of my kids was bullied by a parent when my child was in first grade. Bullied to be like, why don't you talk to my daughter? Like they were not friends, they were, and we didn't know of it like another, you know, for a year. So bullying happens in various forms, right? Sometimes you feel like bullies are on, you know, on campus, they may not be. So, and then now with cyber bullying, this problem is huge, right? So I have been a 10-years Project Cornerstone volunteer and Project Cornerstone is a program that is like, and very fortunate that CUSD offers. And I was 10 years every week. One of the things that they, you know, then they teach is that, how do be, how do you become an upstandard and not be a bystander? And but it starts by you recognizing the situation, having a trusted adult in school, having a trusted adult in, you know, in your personal life. And how do you then recognize those emotions, share those emotions with the person you trust? And then someone takes an action, not necessarily you, because in elementary school, you, you may not be able to kind of, you know, take those actions. So school kind of, you know, programs like Project Cornerstone, which at least 10 years, I saw the value. So implementing those programs, but like then on the cyber bullying side, that is a huge problem. So like, how do you, you know, we already have, by the way, programs in CUSD, but then I think implementation will take time. And then that also includes parents and families at home to be partnering with it. As parents and community, we cannot just be not kind of recognizing the needs and not, and not be part of it.
Okay, thank you. The final question with a two-minute response is, what changes would you support for climate literacy and student involvement in sustainability?
Yeah, climate and sustainability, although they may be related, but they can be different things too. So I do as a parent, as a human being, I absolutely, I'm a believer that climate change is real and something needs to be done for it. And it starts by education. I'm a, I'm an, I love education. So I believe everything starts by not making an assumption that everybody knows why climate change is a problem. We can take that like from the beginning. Hey, teaching students and like parents as well. This is why we believe like climate change is a problem, giving real examples of what, what will happen. And being hands-on with like, if you were, what could you do about it? Like as a student, plant a tree. As a student, like use less water, like not just in school and, you know, don't put chemicals, don't throw like plastic, all those things. So maybe reminders are in that, education at the school level. And then we could also send these material to parents and, you know, maybe in park where kids play, right? So bringing, again, I'm a big holistic community parent kind of student, work together kind of person. So showing like examples of how it will impact. And then sustainability is like sustainable use of resources, right? So then there it comes like, do you use plastic or metal? So using sustainability as a way of lifelong practice, because sustainability is lifelong. Climate, maybe we all work together and we will help, but if we don't understand as a student, as a child, as a person using park and our general normal natural resources, water and soil and tree and, you know, just connecting with the nature, we may not do our job, right? So teaching sustainability practices both at school, in community, at home. And also we are teaching everyone that why climate change is, what does climate change mean? And what part of it is that we should be, you know, worried about or thinking about?
Okay, thank you. Next we'll move to our lightning round of 30-second responses. There's four of them. The first one is, should schools test for learning disabilities?
So should schools test for? And can I just ask clarifying question? So test means should schools be certified whether they are the, doing the right job in teaching schools disability or like, should schools have a test for whether a student is disabled or not?
The latter.
Latter. Okay. So I think, because it's like we're talking about elementary and middle school. So school by themselves cannot take this decision. They will need to kind of partner with parents as well to make that decision. And in case of. I love it.
All right. Next question, what more can the district do to support safe routes to school?
Yeah, a lot more, I guess, because I've seen so many schools. So I understand that, and Sherlene, like I just talked to her yesterday. So there are organizations in place who are working towards at least kind of, you know, just making walking to schools or biking to school safer. So school, but then I also learned from her that it's a, it's a city who actually kind of comes in that equation of allowing those resources to be placed. So school, city and organizations like that and board partnering together can, can do something about it.
Thank you. Next is, what can the district do to ensure equitable access to transportation?
I'll start by partnering, right? So if we, so if we don't, if we wouldn't have closed schools, right? If every kid could walk to the school, maybe that was a principle earlier, that, that's safe, less traffic. If that was a model, then maybe we, we wouldn't be talking what you just asked, like, but now we are talking about, we close certain schools and we have concentration of students in certain areas. So now we create this open enrollment kind of model. So what do we do? I think I will partner again with cities and, and board working together.
All right. And the last of the 30-second response questions, how should LGBTQ students be protected and supported in our schools? For example, how are trans student needs met?
So it's, it's a question to me of identity. It starts by, you know, allowing parents and again, we are talking elementary and middle. So allowing, giving that decision to the kids and the parents, first of all, together, that whether they want to be identified. It starts by like, do I want to be identified as that? And once I want to be, I like to be identified in that role or as that identity, then creating framework and policies in school in how school will address, you know.
All right. Thank you. Those are so fast. Yes. All right. So thank you so much. And that concludes the lightning round and you now have an opportunity for a one-minute closing statement.
First of all, thank you so much for allowing me. This is my, as I said, my first, first interview. So I'm very grateful for you considering me to, you know, you know, and also the first interview here. So thank you so much. This means a lot. And yeah, I'm here for like, you know, holistic education system, like which includes STEM art, you know, art and environment and everything. And building citizens like for tomorrow, which CUSD has given to my kids and my family. As an immigrant, I have, I've achieved so much. All my life has been in the school district. And I'm very proud of what my kids and we have achieved as a community. And I want to, I want your support in allowing me to be, you know, representing you in keeping our community school safe and, you know, be equitable the way had they had been and very modern, very modern and innovative in how we handle situation in an inclusive manner. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Yes. All right. So we thank you for attending and we ask that you exit for the next interviews. It's, it's part of the process. Right. As we're transitioning here to our next candidate. Our next candidate will be Doug Coons. Also for one of those two seats on the Cupertino Union School District. And there he is. Okay. Welcome Doug. We have six questions for you and as well as an opening statement and then four questions, which will be a lightning round, which you have not seen those questions yet. So we are recording and hopefully that's okay with you.
Absolutely.
Great. All right. If you are ready, you can begin with your opening statement.
Thank you. So good afternoon, Sunnyvale Down Club. My name is Doug Coons and I'm running for Cupertino Union School District's board this fall. For years I volunteered to improve the world for kids as a PTA leader at local schools, mentoring youth as a scoutmaster and protecting the environment on Sunnyvale Sustainability Commission. The same values drive me to want to serve our district. I look to engage our diverse communities to serve students from all backgrounds and circumstances. I aim to incorporate ideas from teachers and staff to provide a quality education that helps kids grow into healthy, successful adults. I will lean on my knowledge to help our schools operate more sustainably, encouraging walking and biking to school and protecting our climate by phasing out greenhouse gas emissions. I will push for smart, focused use of the district's resources, carefully weighing trade-offs and looking for common ground as we build a better future for all of our kids.
Thank you, Doug. The first question that has a two-minute response is, how does the district demonstrate and support diversity, equity and inclusion? And how should they?
So the district already has a lot of formal structures that are in place. These include things like board policies, both promoting diversity and inclusion. And also, you know, we'll touch later on, you know, policies against things like harassment and bullying. In addition, the district is already, for example, holding regular professional development with teachers and staff to help make sure that they're aware of different diversity topics. And principals also do things like touch on diversity and inclusion in their newsletters. So one, you know, talking about how they should be addressing diversity and inclusion, I'd say, let's make sure that we're starting in the classroom. One thing is just making sure that, for example, we're celebrating all holidays, not particularly, you know, holidays that are coming from a particular cultural background. Making sure that everybody both has a chance to see each other's holidays and also feels like they're being seen. I'd also call out that I think that outreach to non-English speaking parents is important. And I think that there's a real missed opportunity so far to open up our public processes and promote civic engagement. Right now, our board's meetings don't have translation available. So as, you know, people are signing on and watching board meetings, if they don't speak English, they've got a real barrier to being able to access the board meetings and know what's going on. So I think that making sure that, you know, we have translation available so that everybody can partake fully is a way to get beyond, you know, symbolism and, you know, make sure that actually we are opening up doors and inviting everybody in to participate.
All right. Thank you. The next question is regarding. The next question is regarding sexual assault slash harassment and racism in our society. What policies have worked to address these evils and promote a safe learning environment for our children? What other policies might be needed to address current issues?
Sure. So the district already has a no tolerance policy in place with respect to bullying and sexual harassment. And staff are undergoing professional development to help recognize signs and symptoms. You know, if there are kids who are experiencing something in school or perhaps, you know, having a situation at home. In addition, the district already has barriers to abuse that are in place. Safeguards such as making sure that teachers aren't communicating with kids over social media and making sure that kids are not alone in vehicles with teachers, for example, you know, when they're going to field trips. So one thing that is, you know, sort of a tough area is looking at boundaries, you know, outside of the school. So, you know, when students are using, for example, you know, electronic devices within the school, you know, those devices already have, you know, content blockers in place and the networks are monitoring. You know, the kids aren't accessing social media, for example. But when kids are at home, you know, outside of the school day, you know, those personal devices are not. So, you know, one thing there to help make sure that we're looking beyond what happens just within the school day and thinking about the the kid's situation holistically is making sure that we've got things in place that, you know, help kids to be aware of bullying and that they're feel empowered to intervene and not just be a bystander if they're experiencing something themselves or see a peer having a situation. So then that's really, you know, making sure that the kids are looking out for each other and bringing issues back to the school if any situations arise.
Thank you. The third question is what criteria would you use to evaluate literature and textbooks used in the curriculum?
All right, so for textbooks, there are evaluation tools from the state that are used to assess how well a textbook aligns with the state's required curriculum elements. So after passing that basic screening, it's important to evaluate, you know, the candidates textbooks that seem promising in depth before proceeding to full scale adoption. So that means having, you know, a group of expert teachers look at the textbook thoroughly and then piloting actual use of the textbook for a small representative group of students for a limited time to actually see how it works in the field before you commit to using it, you know, at large across the district and making that investment in it. In terms of literature, in addition to aligning with the state's curriculum requirements, it's important for the content to really be something that today's kids can connect with. That's inherently subjective, but at least in part that means ensuring that the books are reflecting, you know, human experiences from across a variety of cultures, both so that kids have a chance to see a bit of themselves all but also so that the kids have a window onto other worlds and experiences that inspire the imagination and foster a reflection about ethical concepts and dilemmas. And most importantly, help to build empathy for, you know, people, you know, from all walks of life and seeing what we have in common with each other.
All right, thank you. The fourth question, what should the district do to ensure every student is treated equally in terms of facilities and educational experience?
So for this, I'd say there are a few things. One is making sure that there's just systematic quality of offerings. And that includes, for example, at the middle school level, making sure that the same set of electives are available across all the schools in the district. And that also includes, you know, again, systematic things like making sure that there are standardized schedules and instructional minutes. And this is actually something that the district has in the last couple of years. I worked to actually balance instructional minutes across the different middle schools because differences in schedules did give rise to differences in how much instructional time the kids are getting. That also means that we're making sure that enrichment for the kids is coming from the district and not coming from like parent teacher associations or parent teacher organizations. Exactly because we have quite wide disparities in terms of resourcing from from local school to local school. One thing that helps there is Prop 28 funding, particularly for arts that's become available on the last couple of years. And the district is working to expand out, for example, having music offerings at each school and across all grade levels. So it's basically making sure that, you know, when you have like a parents group, something like that, but, you know, they can add to the school, but not in terms of, you know, core areas. And so that the district is looking after the the core for free kid.
Okay, thank you. Next is bullying in schools is an ongoing problem. What can be done to ensure that students are safe on school grounds in and out of class?
So I think that this ties into, you know, kind of the previous question in a way about, you know, bullying and sexual harassment. Really, these are all conversations about safety of students. And, you know, there are people who think of safety in terms of, you know, having fencing and things like that. But it's at core really about making sure that, you know, the kids are treating each other well and also making sure that there's respect and making sure that if there is an issue that's arising, that, you know, that is getting brought to the attention of teachers and staff. And also simply that, you know, if somebody is experiencing an issue that, you know, they're getting support from peers saying, you know, hey, even if a kid isn't comfortable standing up to a bully directly, you know, that that kind of behind the scenes support can also help somebody to get through. So, you know, in terms of how to make sure that those behaviors are actually happening, it's a matter of, you know, I think you're in and you're out having lessons that are age appropriate and emphasize, you know, being an upstander. So understanding things like, you know, what are the different situations that students might encounter? And what are the behaviors that you should be doing to, you know, help address situations when they arise?
Okay, thank you. The last of the two minute questions is what changes would you support for climate literacy and student involvement in sustainability?
My favorite question. So for this particular question, there already are things that are part of the state curriculum. So making sure that kids understand the science behind climate change and understanding, you know, the implications for society. So really, I think that, you know, what I see here in terms of, you know, what the district should be doing is making sure that we're not just checking a box here, but that we're making it tangible for kids and making it not just that you understand it kind of in an abstract theory kind of way, but that it's something that you have a stake in and understand how it ties to you. So there are a few things. One thing that I would support would be making sure that we've got bike safety training, for example, as part of the middle school PE curriculum. Because if kids feel safe biking to school and you also, by the way, tie that to this is one thing that you are doing to address climate change. That's, I think, powerful and it gives the kids a sense of agency. And it's also, you know, tied to our main driver of greenhouse gas emissions, which is on road transportation. Another thing that I would cite would be like food scraps collection and making sure that we're not sending things like food scraps, you know, in the trash off to landfill. But the, you know, those kids are, you know, in the cafeterias that they're finishing up their lunches. But things like the extra food scraps are going into, you know, an appropriate separate container and thus not, you know, ultimately resulting in an aerobic digestion in a landfill causing methane emissions. That's one where you can have kids who are, you know, trained and stationed by the the different receptacles to help direct other kids so that they are playing an active role in terms of having the the kind of outcome that we would want.
All right, thank you. Next we'll move on to our lightning round, which has thirty second responses and those go really quickly. First is should schools test for learning disabilities?
I think that they should. I think that, for example, every state except for Cali or not every state, but most states in the country, California accepted have universal screening for dyslexia, for example. And that's a key way to catch that early and get interventions in place before it kind of snowballs on a kid. So where we have good screening instruments, I think it's important to deploy them universally and get interventions in place before they impact that kid's learning.
All right, thank you. Next is what more can the district do to support safe routes to school?
So I think that there's one thing I would call out. The Fremont Union High School District has a really good policy in place, in board policy in terms of safe routes to school and calls out a number of different things, among other things, having it so that the board can can adopt resolutions as a board in favor of safe routes to school type of interventions. I think that CUSD can adopt a similar policy and be systematic in terms of supporting, you know, initiatives in our member cities to help make those routes possible.
Thank you. And the third lightning round question is what can the district do to ensure equitable access to transportation?
So the district already has a transportation program. And I think that one thing that we'll see, you know, an issue for the district is trying to balance enrollment. So I think that as the district works on balancing enrollment, transportation has to be part of the picture there so that we're making sure that, you know, if somebody is traveling to a school that's far from their home, that that's not necessarily adding to car traffic.
Right, and the final lightning round question. How should LGBTQ students be protected and supported in our schools? For example, how are trans student needs met?
So one thing I would cite here is making sure that when we're remodeling facilities, that we're having all gender bathrooms being put into place. And for a transgender student who might not be willing to be out to their peers yet, this takes it off the table because they're not having to out themselves. They're just going to the same all gender restroom as everybody else. And that lets them think about surfacing things in a way that they're comfortable with and in the meantime, feeling comfortable with what they're doing.
Hey, thank you. That concludes the lightning round and we will move on to your final one minute closing statement.
Thank you. So I hope that everyone here agrees that I should receive the Sunnyvale Dem Club's endorsement because I'm a progressive voice with a strong public track record on environmental issues and housing issues in my service on the Sustainability Commission. I'm the proud parent of two LGBTQ plus kids and I seek to win office to help protect our populations that are at highest risk of being marginalized. I've actively engaged with the USD Board over the last year. I regularly attend public meetings to understand the current issues. And earlier this year, I was the only candidate who attended the district's candidate information session, demonstrating my commitment to the district and to this process. I expect that I respectfully ask you to join Mayor Klein, Vice Mayor Shrinivasan and Council Members Mellinger and Sisneros in endorsing my candidacy. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your statements and responses, Mr. Coons. And that concludes our interview session. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we will transition to our third candidate for CUSD. And this is Sylvia Leon. We're just inviting her in. She's here in person. Be very careful here. Just going this way. All right, you get your own microphone. Own comfy chair.
Thank you.
And I'll be I'll be doing the interview. Get the fireside chat going. All right, and for all of the people on Zoom, this is a hybrid meeting. So for those on Zoom, this camera is here and then you're also shown on the big screen up over here. So when you're you're responding respond to the camera.
That's it.
All right, so we'll be doing a about a twenty minute interview. The first you'll have a one minute opening statement. With then we have six questions where you'll have two minute responses and then a lightning round of four questions with thirty second responses all by a one minute closing statement.
Okay.
All right, and this meeting is being recorded. That's okay. All right, so Ms. Leon, you can go ahead with your one minute opening statement.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, everybody. It's good to see you all. My name is Sylvia Leon. I am a trustee with the Cupertino Union School District. I was appointed six years ago and in those six years I have governed through, well, I've governed through a lot of things, structural budget deficit, declining enrollment, school closures, and of course, COVID nineteen and everything that went along with that. During my tenure, our district has made a lot of strides in supporting students, really focusing on mental health and social and emotional learning, which is really a passion area for me. And then personally, I've just been involved with the CUSD community for fifteen plus years. I've been in pretty much every parent volunteer role you can think of, from walking school bus to PTO president to grad chair to athletic boosters. And so I really have a deep connection and love for my community and the knowledge. And that's where my service comes out of. So I'm excited to have the opportunity to continue serving for another four years for our thirteen thousand five hundred students.
All right, thank you. The first question with two minute responses is how does the district demonstrate and support diversity, equity and inclusion? And how should they?
Sure. And I'm going to use my notes, is that okay? Okay. So I think, you know, in terms of diversity, equity, inclusion, it has to be a multi-pronged approach. You know, there isn't one silver bullet that can solve all of those things. For us in CUSD, we are a majority minority population, so seventy two percent of our students are AAPI. And so what that means is that we have a community that community that already has a lot of diverse cultures, backgrounds and lived experiences. One of the things that I'm really proud of that we did this year is we completely revamped our school lunch menu. And so we brought in a consultant to come in and look at the things that our students were eating and then really just try to honor that representation. So instead of serving ham sandwiches and peanut butter and jelly, we're now serving Chana Masala, spicy kimchi tofu soup, tofu chicken, tofu masala pasta. And and it's been amazing. And I wouldn't even call that like a DEI program. It's just about making it part of the culture, making it a part of of every day where as a student, I get to see the foods that my mom cooks and my parents cook at home represented at school where I am and normalized. And I think that's a really big thing to starting to build pride in yourself and in your identity. I think the other thing that we do is all of our leaders, our principals, our managers go through a racial equity training program that has started, that started like two years ago. There's been good feedback from that. We do want to hopefully expand that to a larger amount of staff, but right now it's mostly at the district level. And then I think also in terms of hiring practices, it makes a big difference. If you look at, we have twenty three schools and probably about nine of our nine of our principals are people of color that represent our community. I think when you have a principal on campus who looks like you, where the families, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Second question regarding sexual assault or harassment and racism in our society. What policies have worked to address these evils and promote a safe learning environment for our children? And what other policies might be needed to address current issues?
So we do have policies on all of these things from sexual harassment to unlawful discrimination, prohibiting behavior that in any way creates that hostile environment. We have a Title IX coordinator. And so they're there if something does happen. We have things like gaggle speak gaggle, uh, gaggle speak, which is a hotline where you can call in case there's anything that happens. So there's a lot of procedures and. in case there's anything that happens. So there's a lot of procedures and policies in place already to allow people to feel like they can report things without any retaliation. But I think also in terms of having harassment policies, it has to go hand in hand with positive behavior policies as well. It's not about restrictions and not about rules. It's about changing the culture. And so we have things like positive school climate policies. We have a wellness policy. We have a student guidance and counseling policy because the reality is that policies don't govern your heart. You know, you can put in a lot of rules, but if you're not teaching the students, what's behind that? The meaning behind it, the value of people, the dignity of respect, then, you know, it's kind of empty gestures. And so what we do is we do a lot of positive behavior programs. We have something called PBIS, which is really enforcing that idea of being respectful, responsible, being safe. We also have a lot of programs like Project Cornerstone and all of these other things that really help students understand their own agency and understand their own dignity.
Hey, thank you. The third question, what criteria would you use to evaluate literature and textbooks used in the curriculum?
So that's okay. So we already have some policies in place for textbook adoption. So I was trying to understand this question when I was like preparing for it and I was thinking that you were probably thinking more like, you know, literature or library, but you also said textbooks. So I'm going to answer that question. But we do have a process where we have teachers come in, we create a committee, we look at a couple of different textbooks and then we do a pilot. We let the teachers look at what the resources are. We look at what the supplemental materials are. We look at how well the students are able to learn and master the material and how easily teachers are able to understand material and teach it back. And so last year, we actually approved, adopted a new phonics curriculum. We adopted a new science textbook and then we also adopted a new history and social studies textbook. And so those are more on the academic end. On the literature side, there's a couple of different things that we do. So at the library level, we really do let the librarians, we rely on their expertise to choose those books. However, we also have three different projects going on where we have librarians come together as a committee with our ed director. And the first one we looked at, this was two years ago, two, three years ago, was about reflecting the diversity, the culture of our community. And so the librarians went and vetted through a ton of books and came up with recommended lists that were then sent out. And then the district funded that. And so it was really important that the district was the one to fund that versus relying on parent donations because then there wouldn't be that consistency. This past year, there was a committee on LGBTQ plus inclusion. And so that one again was a group of our librarians working together with our ed services director to vet a whole bunch of books and make sure they were age appropriate, but also that they showed different kinds of families. You know, we're talking about TK to eighth grade. So.
All right. Next is what should the district do to ensure every student is treated equally in terms of facilities and educational experience?
Well, in terms of facilities, the last bond that we had was Measure H. That was 2012. So frankly, none of our facilities are up to date. None of our students are getting the best facilities. And the good news is that we put on the ballot for this November, a new bond. So it's Measure Z. So please look out for that. Please support it so that our students can get better facilities. In terms of educational experience, I think we've made some good strides in that we have a big district. There's 23 schools. We're in six cities. And for a long time, there was a lot of inequities happening, especially when we were budget challenged. We had to rely on parent donations a lot. And not all of our schools have the same income level in terms of their parent community. And so we did have schools that had less art and less music, depending on what the parent donations were. The really good thing is that the last few years, there's been a couple of things, Prop 28, there's been, we've been able to use some of the revenue coming from our school closure and rental and put that towards art and music. So now everybody is getting the same amount of art and music, which is something very, very happy about. At the middle school level, it's also been a bit of an inequity as well because not every middle school was offering two electives for every kid. And that was kind of dependent on what the teachers like to do. Sometimes they like longer periods. So there's less periods, but longer periods, or there's more periods, but shorter periods. And so it wasn't equitable because sometimes at one in middle school, you might have two electives. Another middle school, you might have one elective, but it's shorter. And so a year ago, we really decided that was something that we wanted to get rid of. We want to make sure every single student had the opportunity to have two electives. And I think that's also really important when you have students who are struggling academically. Because if they are struggling academically and then they have to, you know, for their elective, go to a tutoring class, then you're taking away another opportunity for them to actually be engaged in school.
Thank you. The fifth question, bullying in schools is an ongoing problem. What can be done to ensure that students are safe on school grounds in and out of class?
I think that we've actually been addressing this head on. Just last year, we added a new priority to our district priorities. We have four priorities, fiscal responsibility, community engagement, future minded learning. And then this fourth one is creating a sense of belonging. And I love that we did this. This was really something that I was pushing for, making sure that students and faculty and staff, everybody in the community has a place where they belong. We see that post pandemic, especially, there's been this epidemic of loneliness. You know, people feeling isolated, of people not feeling like they belong anywhere. And so at schools, they should, we should be making every effort we can to make sure that our students belong. And so that's kind of the larger overarching goal that we've given our principals. And then at each site, they're able to customize that for whatever their community works. And so every, every other board meeting, we have students coming and telling us what they're doing to promote that sense of belonging. And so it's great because you see like some schools do like recess buddies, some school do web leaders, some schools do news crews. I mean, it's amazing and the kids have ownership on it. And I think that's what you want because you want it coming from the students themselves. I think the other thing that we do is we've integrated social and emotional learning into every classroom. And at the middle school level, it's a part of the curriculum every week. We're using things like Project Cornerstone, Soul Shop, Second Step. These are all really good programs that really bring in somebody else to teach those lessons. If you're familiar with Project Cornerstone, they teach from an early level how to be an upstander and not a bystander. It's something that my kids grew up with and they're in college. They still use that terminology and I really do think it makes a difference. It works.
Right. And the last question of the two minute responses, what changes would you support for climate literacy and student involvement in sustainability?
Well, so we recently approved a solar panel installation for all 23 of our schools. It installs solar panels and reduces our energy consumption. It also integrates an environmental curriculum for our students. I'm really excited about that. We're using a vendor that is, that works with schools. And so it's great because as the kids are watching the solar panels being put in, they're being taught how to measure energy levels. They're being taught how to look at what it looks like when it's, you know, darker or lighter, you know, different times of the day. And it's a real learn by doing kind of experiment for them. And so I think that's something that I'm really excited about. The other thing that we've done, and I've been helping to champion this, is a food recovery program at our middle schools. And so there's a Senate Bill, Senate Bill 1383. And we've been launching a pilot program where we work with Peninsula Food Runners and any of the leftover food that we have at our middle school, actually, we use our special ed students to help us with the sorting and the delivery over to the Food Runners Program. And then the Food Runners Program delivers it to places like Second Harvest and all of those things. So it's teaching kids about food waste. It's teaching kids about kind of this whole cycle. And then I think lastly, just supporting things like walking and biking. I've been a part of Safe Routes to School. I was a walking school bus leader for many, many years. And I think it's really important that we continue to make the streets safer for our students, that we make biking and and walking something that's integrated into our school culture as well. And I've seen it work at some of our schools really, really well when the principals and the teachers have buy-in and they're the ones asking the kids who walked to school today, you know, versus like if, you know, at other schools, if the teacher or the principal isn't as bought into it, then, you know, it kind of gets laid to the wayside. And so I think we can do a better job at trying to make it a little bit more integrated into every school.
Okay, thank you. So next we'll move on to the lightning round with 30 second responses and there are four questions. First is, should schools test for learning disabilities?
Okay, so my understanding is that my understanding is that we already do assessments for whether or not students have special needs. In terms of testing for it, I honestly, I honestly don't know. I would imagine that what I would want to happen is for every student who has learning disabilities to have the opportunity to see what they are.
Okay. Next is what more can the district do to support safe routes to school?
So everything I just said. I think the district can continue to partner with cities, continue to meet with advocates to find out what's going on and continue to champion those things. Looking for needs, trying to get it, trying to get a safe route to school parent champion at every school site would be a big, big plus because you need that, that parent champion.
Thank you. Next, what can the district do to ensure equitable access to transportation?
So is that transportation to school or just public transportation? I mean, it's hard, right? Because if you look at where kids live nowadays, like back in the 1960s, most of the kids lived within a mile of school and nowadays they don't, right? We just live further away. So how do we help kids with transportation? It's about, I think at this point, about getting community involved. It's about trying to incorporate things like carpools and things like, sorry.
Okay. And the last of the lightning round questions is how should LGBTQ students be protected and supported in our schools? For example, how are trans student needs met?
One of the things that we've done is we've made sure that there's a mental health therapist at every single site. This is something new in the last couple of years. I think that's really important that students know that there's a safe place where they can go. I think we do things like we have clubs like GSA. And then I think it's important that we just are able to, again, it goes back to that sense of belonging. It goes back to that sense of creating a culture where everybody feels safe. We have different.
Those 30 seconds go by so fast. All right. So thank you so much for your responses and the two minute responses and the 30 second lightning round. Next, we have your one minute closing statement. Yeah, sorry.
All right. So for me, these last six years on the board have really been a time of growth and really understanding what it means to be a school board trustee and be a community advocate. And really just seeing how much of what we do in this role goes outside of the classroom and into the community. I went from being a PTA president to being president of the board. And it's really just kind of amazing how much learning I had to do to understand what that means and what to do when you're in that position of leadership. What I found is that the regional things I can do are really powerful and I've been able to help advocate for the North Sunnyville Shelter. I've been able to help advocate for permanent bike lanes on Homestead Road and really just being a part of the Sunnyvale community and trying to make the community better. And so when I think about those values that I hold dear, like caring for the vulnerable, loving your neighbor, equity for all, I really do feel like it's aligned with those Democratic Party values. And so that's why your endorsement as Sunnyvale Dems would mean a lot for me because it would be a validation of what I'm doing already.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lyon, and this concludes our interview. Thank you. All right. And next, we're going to be transitioning to another school district. Actually, the Santa Clara County Board of Education. And we have one candidate to interview and her name is Jessica Spicer. See, she is online.
Yes, I just got brought in.
Thank you. All right, welcome.
Hi, I'm trying to see where you are. I see you on the top, sorry. It's, you know, anyway, it's been a day. I made it back. Oh, I'm happy.
All right. Well, thank you for joining us. And just a little bit about the format, we are recording, as you can tell. And the format is you'll have one minute for an opening statement. Then we will ask six questions that have a two minute response. And then we'll go into a lightning round of four questions that have 30 second response. And you'll close out with a one minute closing statement.
All right. My computer decided to play music while you were talking and I was quickly feverishly trying to shut it off. And I heard the minutes stuff, but I didn't catch it all. And I'm sorry that I'm asking for a repeat, but I was literally dealing with a technical difficulty. I'm so sorry.
No, no problem. Yes. So you'll have one minute for an opening statement. We've got six questions where you'll have two minutes to respond. And then the lightning round questions were not published in advance and those have a 30 second response. And at the end is a one minute closing statement.
All right.
So whenever you're ready, go ahead with your opening statement.
Thank you all for having me. I'm really happy to be here. I'm a lifelong Democrat. I grew up very low income and was a product of literally every entitlement program you can think of. I was a product of Social Security survivors benefits. I got Pell Grants, Stafford Loans, et cetera. And quite literally, public education was what was able to get me to rise up out of my situation. And that's why I'm running for county school board and looking also for your endorsement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Of the first of the two minute questions is, how would you ensure that Santa Clara County continues to improve on the quality of education for all students?
I would make sure truly to, one of the big ways, one of the things, oh, I love that you have a timer. That's amazing. I want to make sure that every kid, no matter their background, gets the best education possible. And one of the ways I want to do that at the county board level is to make the county office and board be truly a convening body for all local school districts to make sure all of our students graduate with their A to G requirements met. And what that does for students is not only has them ready to go to a UC or a Cal straight off the bat, right after high school, but even if they choose to take a while to go to college or not go to college at all, they are set up for success. If they go into the trades or just trade into a job, the more education they have or tests and for TK through eighth, what that means is that there would be the focus on literacy, learning how to read by third grade at the grade level, and then also Algebra I. Algebra one and eighth grade. Um, it's not easy to get there, but for example, in uh Mountain Vila Salto's High School District, they're already setting that up to be their graduation requirements in this uh next year. And they only need to change three courses. Um, so that is one way. There's plenty of other uh ways that I can uh speak of going forward, but that's my best example. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Uh, the the next question, how should the Santa Clara County Board of Education demonstrate and support diversity, equity, and inclusion?
I mean, they should do a lot of what they're already doing. They have a uh big focus on equity already. Um, but there's different ways, for example, like in my, I am a trustee for Los Altos uh School District and the way that we've focused on that is that not only has my board passed an equity policy and this was pre uh George Boyd, uh, it was just something we already cared about. Um, so we passed that equity policy and then a couple of months later passed or approved an anti-bias uh framework that all, quite literally, all curriculum uh would be guided by um in our district. Um, in the first foray into instituting that was uh making sure our social studies uh was more representative of all cultures and backgrounds. Um, and then it's also just becoming part of the fabric of of everything. Um, administration, teachers, staff, et cetera, uh, that we are to be welcoming of all cultures and and learning about all different cultures and all the different ways uh kids are um in a way that is welcoming to to all different uh types. So that is a way that the the county uh could do it also is making sure there a a uh uh, the county, as it relates to curriculum, et cetera, is a convening body. So every every time I say that, it is because they don't, they don't inform or tell what local districts can do, but they can say this is the right thing to do and you you should do it and here are resources on how to do it. So that's what I suggest. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, the next question, what policies and practices can the Santa Clara County Board use to prevent and reverse the effects of racism and sexism in schools?
Uh, along the the same old li- lines that I mentioned in the prior question, it is really working with an anti-bias framework from uh from all levels and and truly to make sure uh that um kids uh are are learning um i- in a age appropriate way, um, how to be welcome of of all cultures and then also making sure that they understand um that cultures in general that were different than your average white cult uh Christian culture were treated uh wrong, uh treated terribly and that we need to learn um from those mistakes. Um, and really just making sure that uh, you know, as it relates to overcoming the the system, it is actually giving, making sure as it relates to equity, yes, making sure kids that need more resources are getting them in order to succeed. I grew up with nothing. My public school education was what got me to where I am today. And it was because I I had the resources from uh my teachers, my staff members and my school community. And I need to make sure that every last kid, no matter their background, is getting that in order to succeed. So that is another way uh that can happen. Um, I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the fourth question, educational opportunities are not equal in all parts of the county. For example, North Sunnyvale students have been disadvantaged for decades. What can be done at the county level to address these inequities?
At the county level, it is making sure that North uh North Sunnyvale uh schools are getting uh the resources uh they need. Uh, the County Office of Education um is a uh, the way that they are funded is they are getting money uh from the state and also getting money from our property taxes, but they are also uh seeking uh private funding and different types of uh so funding sources. And it's making sure that uh North Sunnyvale gets those uh resources, be it wellness spaces, be it more training uh for teachers in making sure that they reach the different um types of demographics that are in North Sunnyvale. Um, and making sure that the the families are getting the resources they need, whether it's education related or basic human needs uh related. You know, the county should at least know where to connect them to other sources, whether uh is directly from the County Office of Education or from the county uh itself or other private sources. It's really just, you know, trying to be as much of a one stop shop for these families and kids, uh, so they are getting what they need. Thank you.
Thank you. And then the last of the two minute response questions, how can LGBTQ students be protected and supported in our schools?
That's a good question. It is really made, they should be made to felt be felt, uh, should be made to feel welcome. Sorry, sometimes my my mouth does not work. Um, and and that, you know, they should know that they are just like any student. Um, we are all, you know, Trump made the term snowflake be a bad word. Honestly, I don't think it's a bad word. We are all snowflakes. We are all individuals. Every last one of us are individuals and we should be made to feel welcome for being uh individuals. I see it see it as the same for, you know, a- anything that makes us different, whether we are uh on the uh different on the gender spectrum or we we uh like men, we like women, we like um both, et cetera, or we're, we were born in the wrong body. Uh, uh, we we should be made to feel welcome because that's normal. It's not something that a person makes the choice to be. It is, it is, you are born that way. And so ways that they can be made to feel welcome is just generally making sure that curriculum and that the school is making sure they make the made to feel welcome, but it's also making sure that they have uh mental health supports um in their school because I know that is uh, we're, we're not in a perfect world yet where what I'm saying is actually always happening. Um, so we need to make sure that they have trusted adults and friends um in spaces to help them make uh to be made to feel better. Because sadly, this world is not perfect uh yet. I know we're, all of us on this Zoom are working to that end, um, but it's uh it's a hard, it's a hard going, but we're all, we're all up for it. Thank you.
Right, thanks. That concludes the two minute response questions. We'll now move into the lightning round. Uh, there are four questions with thirty second responses. First is, how should the county address new and existing charter charter schools?
Um, they should uh look at, you know, you use the law and the law has changed since um charter schools came into play thirty years ago and thankfully for the benefit of local school districts. Um, they should look at the financial impact to the district. They should make sure that the charter is in fact not or is going to serve all all students. Um, and honestly, really, it 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 shouldn't be a uh a rubber stamp. You need to look at literally every factor.
Thank you. The next question, what should be the role for the county in addressing underperforming schools?
Um, in underperforming, the county should be focusing on making sure those underperforming so uh schools are getting the resources, just like um in our local schools, we try to make sure that underperforming kids are getting more scaffolding. We need to make sure that those schools are getting um and and districts are getting the scaffolding they need. Thank you.
All right, and then the last of the lightning round questions, what is the role of the county in addressing the needs of immigrant students?
Um, in addressing immigrant students, they actually have a um, uh, I mean, it's it's in the same, it's in the same realm. They actually have a pro- program that they run as it relates to migrant um kids. Uh, so there is that, that they actually have a direct role that they uh in educating migrant uh students, uh farm worker students. But as it relates to immigrant students, it is is making sure that that their local districts are getting their ELL resources and honestly, really understanding what uh, the county um and local school districts have to offer. Thank you. Sorry. I feel like all the time I I I didn't spend, I should have gotten back. Just kidding.
Thirty seconds go really fast.
They really do. And that one was harder.
And I actually had skipped one. So this is the last of the uh, the uh lightning round questions. Um, what should be the role of the county in ensuring education for unhoused students?
Um, they need to make sure that that they know that all their rights as it relates to unhoused, uh, the own house families know all their rights as it relates to education. Wherever uh they land, um, they are, have the ability to go to the district that they were uh prior. And honestly, the county should be advocating to make sure that uh as it relates to, hopefully, they're ending in up in at least a uh homeless shelter or onto um, you know, actual housing and that uh there's a standard of care uh for them there. Thank you.
Right, thanks. So that concludes the lightning round and our um interview questions. Thank you. And you'll now have a one minute closing statement.
Um, great. Uh, thank you for having me uh here today. Um, as I mentioned, I'm a lifelong Democrat. I quite literally would not be where I am today if it weren't for the great public education I had. I was very low income and quite literally, my public education was my one positive uh continent. Uh, and so that's why I'm running for public uh, the County Board of Education. I want to make sure kids born into difficult circumstances like my own are given a chance to succeed. So I I truly hope that you will endorse me and, you know, in the end, if if you don't, I I hope I have all your votes uh that if you live in North Sunnyvale. Uh, thank you very much.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Spicer.
All right. Bye. Boom, that was quick.
Yes, thank you.
Have a good one.
You too.
All right, bye bye.
Okay, now we're going to transition to our second to last candidate and this is um another s- different school district. This is Fremont Union High School District. We have one interview for um for one seat in the North Sunnyvale District.
Yeah, just as a quick note of clarification, Fremont, as a quick note of clarification, there are two seats for Fremont Union High School District up the selection cycle, trustee area two and trustee area five. I believe trustee area five is in fact the only trustee area in in the map that does not include any part of Sunnyvale. So uh while the trustee area five race is important, it is not one we can endorse under our bylaws. Trustee area two, however, we're sta- we're in trustee area two right now.
Thank you so much, Martin. All right, and we do have Pat Carpio here in person.
Come on now. Good to see you. And you're going to be sitting here and I'm going to direct you around the cords.
Welcome, Pat. Um, so just as in terms of the format, we have, we're recording this. It's a hybrid meeting. We've got in person and online. We've got two microphones.
Thank you.
And we will have um you make a one minute opening statement. There are uh six questions that you've seen in advance and then there will be, and those you'll have two minutes to respond. And then there's a lightning round of questions uh for questions that will have thirty second responses. And then at the end, a one minute closing statement. Did I say we're recording? I did, right? Okay.
And I'm guessing the time is on that screen.
The time is on that screen and the camera is right here.
All right.
So when you're ready, and start with your one minute statement.
Thank you. Um, my name is Pat Carpio on the ballot, Pat Carpio Aguilar. I am running for Fremont Union High School District trustee area two. I'm very excited because it's a historical opportunity where this is the first time in these um in the northern part of Sunnyvale that we are going to be having representation on the school board. And um I live here, uh, just a few blocks away from here. I teach at Columbia Middle School and I've been a teacher for over forty two years. So this is going to be the first time where I take the experience and the advocacy that I have over to the policy level. If I'm elected, please vote for me. Um, because I think that forty two years of experience in the classroom and other roles, not just the classroom, has allowed me to absorb a lot of what education is and needs and requires of us, but also about how transformational it is to see my students go all the places they go because they have relied on education. And by the way, public education, I need to make a note of that. So um, please vote for me. Oh.
Okay, thank you. So the first of the uh two minute response questions is this is the first trustee area election for FUHSD um in this district. What steps should be taken to address historical inequities in North Sunnyvale?
Um, it's a very complex question and we have to approach it from different angles. So the district Fremont Unified is uh very well funded. And we we have a lot of high schools and other schools within the district. Yet I see when I look at the dashboard outcomes that do not parallel what we should anticipate is happening. And so I think that one of the inequities that we need to address head on, like I've said before, if you can't name it, that problem that you know is there, you probably aren't going to be able to solve it. And starting with access, access is for me very important. It's one of my platforms. Can you access information that the district needs to give everybody? Can you access the school to get to? Because you don't get to choose where you live. If you're a minor, you live there. Can you access the before school and after school activities that may be happening? Can you access weekend activities related to the school? So I think a lot of work has been done. I was very pleased to uh read in the last um in, I don't think it was brought up on the board, but I remember reading something about how now they are hiring uh Santa Clara County uh translation and interpretation services. So there's another step for access in the right direction. And I think that if we listen to people and ask them what they need, they're going to tell you if they trust you. And I think that teachers are a trusted element in the community, a trusted face, and especially because we're here, we see each other at Chavez supermarket, we see each other when I go buy other things like round, you know, and it's like, hi, Ms. Carpio, you're having a sandwich. I'm like, yeah, I'm having a sandwich. So I think just talking to people and asking them, what is it that you're um, that you feel that would help us alleviate some of the stresses and the pressures of living in North Sunnyvale and having access to the closest school, which is Fremont. So.
Okay, thank you. Uh, second is, how does the district demonstrate and support diversity, equity, and inclusion? And how should they?
Again, a step in the right direction. Um, I was at the meeting last week and we heard from a presenter. The the district is interested in finding out how do we serve um our students? Some students that are saying we don't feel safe because of how we are perceived. How do we serve uh the parents? And then creating leadership not only amongst the students, but the staff, creating leadership also within the leadership for understanding what diversity, equity, and inclusion mean and how they are put into practice. Because um you can have a really um experienced PhD speaking to you on screen, but then bringing that down to where the students are and having the students feel engaged and that this is part of what they would like. And obviously the teachers, because this is high school and people in high school have opinions. Uh, young folk are very, they're very wise in their approach and they bring ideas to us that sometimes we tilt our head and it's like, huh, I hadn't thought of that because we really hadn't, because it hasn't affected us the way it's affecting them. So again, there are steps that are starting to, that I know, because uh I'm getting more involved in this, that are starting to lead us in the right direction. The students are the other component, the parents are the other component, but um developing that capacity, developing that the infrastructure to get us to understand there are differences in the world and it's not a bad thing. We can communicate with one another. We can find solutions that are equitable and we can um, I guess, become vulnerable a little bit because just because we haven't been doing it right doesn't mean we can't get started. And when we get started, it's a step in the right direction and um people notice and they want to be part of that.
Okay, nice. Um, next is regarding sexual assault and harassment and racism in our society. What policies have worked to address these evils and promote a safe learning environment for our children? What other policies might be needed to address current issues?
Well, I think that every school and every district have a system where you can report if this happens. However, I think that once you see things at this age, you're not exactly sure if it's going to get better by reporting it. So we have to get ahead of that and start educating our students or everybody, actually, not just our students, to start becoming more aware and I guess, break that culture of silence, like, don't tell anyone, not speaking about it. And the mental, and the mental health component. I'm happy to see that a lot of school districts are now providing more supports where people can go and speak to someone in private kind of way, whether it's a counselor or a social worker or a school psychologist and talk about this. And with that, we can start to find out, where is it that we need to create spaces? Where is it that we need to create? Come up with creative solutions to get people to want to tell us. For instance, my sister, I'm the oldest of seven, and she went through high school, not here, obviously, but she just went through high school, did her thing. When my brother, who is young enough to be my son, but that's another story, was going through the same high school, she noticed that he was getting bullied. And what she did is she went and talked to the principal. She said, these are the places where these things are happening. And I know because I was here and you need to take action and do that right now. Now, why couldn't my brother do that? Well, because he was still in the school. So sometimes we have to reach out and ask people, share with us what's going on. And we're going to get on top of that because sometimes we really don't know. And that's what we have to create the systems to have that communication to know, to do better and know better.
All right. Next is what criteria would you use to evaluate literature and textbooks used in the curriculum?
I love curriculum. I find joy in figuring out that this is something that is coming, that this is something new. And so I guess that's where that's where I live, like figuring out what, like it defines as a nation, what you're learning. It defines you as a community, what you find value in learning. And so to assess that, it's it's not easy because what I find to be valuable for my students might not be what somebody else finds to be valuable or as valuable. And so I think that I voice myself in favor of, is the curriculum engaging? Is it interesting to the students? Is it valid? Is it up to date? Is it something that our students can carry and transfer? So if I go, if I studied in another country, as is my case, and I came here to the United States, did the curriculum serve me? And the answer is yes, it did. So did the teachers and the systems and the infrastructure of the schools that I went to. I'm a product of public education. And so when I look at the how to evaluate curriculum, I'm always thinking that it's, it can't be just pragmatic. Like I can do things. It also has to fill the soul. Like I can, I can feel this way about myself because of what I've learned. Or I can sense the need to deliver to others services because I know it's ethically the proper thing to do. So the values, the purpose and the practicality, I guess, the transferability of skills and knowledge and sense of being, that's, those are the thresholds that I would use.
All right, thank you. The fifth question is bullying is an ongoing problem. What can be done to ensure that students are safe on school grounds in and out of class?
Well, I now realize that I had answered that question and maybe didn't address the one that you had asked. Okay. So let me go back. I will reiterate, opening channels of communication, making people feel safe. And that's a hard ask because, again, they're teenagers and teenagers are trying to distance themselves a little bit from the adults because they're trying to find who they are as people. And so they're kind of building this, this world of, we're here for one another and yet bullying happens. So the creating a positive space for bystanders to speak up for the systems. Well, like I said, by the time we get to seeing bullying behaviors, we probably probably missed the opportunity to have that not happen at all. So creating the interventions ahead of time, talking to people, opening up spaces where people feel safe to discuss if something is off and just like asking, well, I guess not asking, but being there to see the the behaviors, because sometimes the behaviors are there. And we're just kind of like too busy or looking the other way. And so just being open to hear and see what is going on and then take action. And like I said, preferably get to it before it happens because by educating folks about the value of respecting one another, giving each other dignity is part of education, both at home and at school.
All right. And the last of this, the two minute questions are, how significant a problem is the achievement gap between more affluent and low income students? What actions do you propose for the district to address it?
Okay, that sounds a little bit like a rhetorical question. There are achievement gaps. I see it because I'm a teacher. I see it because I live here in North Sunnyvale and I am just, you know, I am struck by the fact that it is so noticeable. How would we approach this? Well, I think the first thing we have to ask is, what are some schools doing that others are not that would help us? Because this is already, the the knowledge is already there. We just have to start making these, I guess, comparative analyses of what is it that we are providing for one group of people that may be also useful to another group of people and therefore easily transferable. And so if, like I said at the beginning, it's access, let's give everybody access. If it is a little bit more of time, then that's, that's also something, you know, I know that because of the state, we can't really work with the minutes, instructional minutes, but we can offer other courses and other things. But then again, how do we make sure that the people that aren't there because they have to take care of their little siblings or they have to take care of grandma, actually have those same opportunities? So while somebody's getting private tennis lessons, somebody is taking care of two or three little, little ones. So we have to start looking there and work on the fringes and ask, how can we, how can we bridge this? Because there is a gap there. And I know how teachers do it. We do it one on one. We spend a lot of our time and a lot of our love devoted to the students. So now it's time to start asking that question amongst the the people on the board. How can we make this kind of close because it's noticeable?
All right, I will move on to the lightning round.
Oh, that sounds threatening.
Thirty seconds goes by really fast. There's only four. Do schools test for ADHD or other learning disabilities and should they?
I think that parents are very heavily involved. When the parents start making a case, the schools start to notice. And they also have specialists that take data and start to look at that. So if the student needs services, then the services are provided. And that's by law. If you find that you, that a child needs the supports, you can't deny them that. It's part of our responsibility. So yes, I believe that students who need the support should be getting it. Oh, that did go by fast.
All right. Second question, what more can the district do to support safe routes to school?
I like this one. The the district has to be put in this in the steps of the student. How many steps do you have to walk to get to school? How many minutes do you have to ride on a bike? How long do you have to go on the bus ride? How, how early do you have to get up to get to that bus? And you have to live it. And I did that this summer. I went on a bike ride to Homestead. It was not easy. And I did it on an empty stomach on purpose because teenagers don't want to eat in order to get a little bit more sleep and that's fair. And I got hungry and tired. So we've got a lot of work to do.
The third question, what can the district do to ensure equitable access to transportation?
And on the same topic, I think that it sounds like we just got to get buses. And that is kind of a generalized simplistic generic response. We got to get school buses. Because the students need to be where they need to learn. And it sounds like, well, you don't just click your fingers and there's school buses. Well, you create, you create the policies that say, we want every student here every day on time, learning, rested, fed and able to take on. Because when you're on a tired bike ride, you don't want to learn. I know that.
All right. And then the last of the 30 second response questions. How should LGBTQ students be protected and supported in our schools? For example, how are trans student needs met?
I think everybody's needs need to be met. And one of the things that I think we're in the right direction is allowing, well, it's not even allowing, it's the law, that if you choose to use whatever facilities aligned with your gender identity, you do. And you can and you should. And so I, I think that district can do what I've seen done in the industry where they have ceiling to floor bathrooms. So you can use whichever one you like. And also you can go to any of the change wherever you want.
Okay, and that concludes our lightning round. And the interview, I will now go to your one minute closing statement.
Okay. Well, like I said at the beginning, I'm here in the community. I know my students. I love my students. I work for them every day. Just yesterday, I left campus around eight because they mattered to me and they mattered to me very deeply. And they mattered to me because I was a student at one point like them, trying to get the best I could out of education. And little did I know that there were people behind the table at some point making those policies. And now that I do know, I think that it's time to take the love and the ownership that I have for whatever student, for whoever walks through the door of my classroom to say, how can we make it better for you? And if we can't make it better, better, how can we move the friction or the steps that you have to go there are extra and you shouldn't have to? So again, I live here, people talk to me, they know me, they see me and they're like, Scarpio. And now they're noticing pink signs around and they're like, is that you? And I'm like, yes, please vote for me between October and November. All right.
All right. Thank you so much for all your responses and your answers. And this concludes our interview.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody.
I don't know where she is.
Hey there, I'm outside of the is, I don't know if I'm in the right spot.
Yes, you are.
Okay. Okay, great.
We're transitioning to our last candidate. All right, we do have one more candidate. We're going to be going, we're going to be going over our time. It is a marathon, but it's an important marathon. All right. And your name is Rimi Khan. Crystal Wickham, good to meet you.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
So this is the camera for those on Zoom and then everyone here in person. Welcome to Sunnyvale Democratic Club. Yes. Yes, we have a second microphone just for you.
There you go.
Check, check. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great.
Oh, I can. Okay, thank you.
All right. And just a little bit about the format. We are recording this hybrid meeting. We will have time for a one minute opening statement from you, followed by six questions. And with two minute responses and then a lightning round of four questions and then a one minute closing statement.
Okay, great. It's like a game show.
Exactly.
Yes.
Yes, yes, we did have to, we did three candidates earlier for Cupertino Union and this is a fourth candidate.
Yes, thank you for having me and fitting me in. I appreciate you.
All right. So go ahead with your one minute opening statement.
Okay, my name is Rimi Khan. I am a Cupertino Union School District parent. And I myself have gone through the Cupertino Union School District as a student as well. Elementary, junior high school and high school. I have two young daughters. They're currently in third and first grade. I've been on the PTO on the board for three years and on the school sites council for three years as well. This is my first year as co-director for the PTO. And my, you know, the reason why I wanted to run for school board is because of the students. I have gone through the system and I've been a professional. I've been in high tech for 15 plus years myself. And I've come around back to see, you know, and and have some input in what our students are exposed to and how to have, you know, equity, involvement, community for the teachers who support our students in order to provide them with the best, well-rounded, holistic education that we could possibly give them.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So the first question of our two minute response questions is, how does the district demonstrate and support diversity, equity and inclusion? And how should they?
Yes, I think this is really important, especially after COVID, because once COVID happened, I think things changed so much. And any gaps that were already existing were bigger, have gotten bigger. And so, you know, providing access to basic needs for children, that was a big way that the district really helped support being able to provide resources to children, you know, whether be from the district directly or at least referring to resources. I think that was really helpful. I know for me as a parent, I receive a questionnaire every year asking about my status and my financial status. And then, you know, if any, you know, resources are available according to my answers, I know I'm, you know, I get provided to them. I get provided them as a parent as well. And within the school, I think, you know, there's a lot of openness, certainly a lot more than when I was going through school. A lot of openness in terms of understanding different students' needs, including neurodivergency and just different needs that students have. And being able to provide the type of resources they need on campus. So an example would be, you know, ABA therapy, therapists within the classroom, working along with the other, you know, with that student, particular student, so that they're able to socially interact with other students as well. And so I think that those off the top of my head are just some of the ways that the district has definitely included. I think another way is opening up the district meetings to parents as well. So if a parent like myself has questions, being able to go in and talk directly to the board. And I felt very welcomed in terms of being able to follow up with the board afterwards. And so I think that those are some of the ways that the board has, that the district has offered inclusion and equity amongst the community, the parents and the students.
Thank you. The second question regarding sexual assault, harassment and racism in our society. What policies have worked to address these evils and promote a safe learning environment for our children? What other policies might be needed to address current issues?
This is such a tough question, especially for me as a woman and having two daughters myself, because this is, it's just very emotional for me. And I want to, of course, make sure that my daughters are safe and all of our daughters are safe and our sons as well. I think that safety is just such an important part of providing students with an ability to be able to learn and absorb education, just providing the opportunities to academically educate us and enough if that student doesn't feel safe. So being, you know, able to provide, unfortunately, I have a story where something had happened to my daughter that she needed to kind of tell her teacher and go to them and be able to receive support and then come home and, you know, let me know, let her father know. I know not all students have that opportunity. So, you know, being able to provide that really safe place for students to go to the teachers, to the principal, and then ultimately also having access to a counselor in order to kind of help them to process that issue, because it doesn't just stop at one incident. It continues for them emotionally, mentally, and it can stay with them. And if students don't have an opportunity to share as they do, as I felt that they have done within our district, then it's really, you know, it's difficult to get past that, I think. And, you know, education is not on the top of their mind anymore. It's safety. And I think it's important to ensure that they have that safety portion so they don't have to worry about it.
All right, thank you. The third question, what criteria would you use to evaluate literature and textbooks used in the curriculum?
That's a good question. So I've been in high tech for 15 years and eight of them was in competitive analysis. And so I can't help but go into my logical competitive analysis realm and just think about, you know, what is, so what are other folks doing? What are they prioritizing and why? And a lot of that information is very easily available. So that would be kind of the first step to understand, you know, what, what is it that was prioritized within other, you know, districts, especially districts who have a lot of, have seen a lot of success. And then, you know, understanding the And then um, you know, understanding the uh, you know, where like where is the re, what are the resources of the literature? So I think that's really important to understand as well. I think the the term fact check has really come up a lot, especially with social media and just so much misinformation out there. So being able to understand the resources that are utilized in order to create the materials that are existing are is another important part of understanding and evaluate how to prioritize the use of the materials within the district.
Thank you. Uh, the fourth question, what should the district do to ensure every student is treated equally in terms of facilities and educational experience?
Okay, there is a Facebook meme and I love it because it really illustrates this so well. So it talks about the difference between equality and equity. And so I always refer to equity because equality just means that everyone gets the same level of resources and not everyone needs the same level of resources. Some people are um, you know, even height wise, some people are shorter than others. So if I have the same stool, footstool as someone who's much taller than me, then it may not work as well for me as it does for someone else. And so really understanding the needs of, and it's difficult to do this, but you know, understanding the needs of the individuals and being able to provide a resource that's customized for that person in order to give them an opportunity to thrive at the same level as someone who maybe requires less resource to thrive.
Okay, um, bullying in schools is an ongoing problem. What can be done to ensure that students are safe on school grounds in and out of class?
This is also such a difficult topic because again, as a parent and as someone who's undergone in the school system in a couple of different districts, uh, you know, I've I've experienced this myself and I've seen just how things like this start to materialize amongst students. And it's such a complex issue because it's hard to just say, oh, this person did this. It's black and white. That's not how it works. Uh, usually there are things that are happening from the perspective of the bully as well. And I think happy, you know, being able to have, you know, safety for them. And this kind of comes into the last question, as you mentioned, to the equity and the quality, right? So being able to provide them with resources as well to help understand, you know, what's going on for them and why this might be happening is just as important as making sure that the person who is being bullied gets the resources they need in order to move past, grow, you know, have a safe environment to talk about it, et cetera. So I really, I do believe in open communication. Um, again, you know, when I, if I get a phone call that someone had done something to my child, I of course understand the confidentiality and I never want, you know, I'm never going to ask for information that's outside of my scope. But I may make a light suggestion of, you know, did I hope that that person also got the resources that were available to them in order to receive the help that they might need. Because I, you know, especially with children, I have a six year old and an eight year old. And at that age, a lot of things are a cry for help that don't seem like a cry for help. And so just ensuring that everyone gets what they need in order to kind of recover from that and understand that there are better ways to express those needs rather than using just brute strength and brute violence um is really important for them to understand. And again, going back to that level of providing the resources in order to help them thrive at that level, I think that that's a very important resource.
All right. And this is the last of the two minute response questions.
Okay.
What changes would you support for climate literacy and student involvement in sustainability?
Yeah, this is a good one. I actually uh got my MBA a couple of years ago. And we talked about sustainability within business and environmental sustainability is just so much more important. It's such, obviously, it impacts everyone. And I think uh, you know, I know for me myself, I had a very, I felt thorough education and understanding on the environmental impacts and what that meant. And also I think adding some of the historical numbers, so data sometimes helps, I feel. And so, for example, we had uh during the first few months of of COVID, of the pandemic, when things shut down and factories shut down, there was a huge improvement in, you know, CO2 levels not being, you know, at a really detrimental level. And ozone was, you know, seeing there was some improvement there too. And I think that information is just as important to share with children as, you know, the negative part of it of where we're, you know, kind of headed, unfortunately. And so being able to really express that impact that something for such a short period of time was able to give, I think gives an idea that it's not as impossible as it may sometimes seem, or it's not as, you know, just detrimental or as lost. There's no reason to lose hope. Um, you know, and I think that that's another important aspect of it is incorporating that aspect of hope along with the education of climate change so that, you know, we can also kind of indicate that, hey, there there could be a solution and you can be part of it. And this is what we can do. I feel like those are the parts of the education around climate change and environment that really helped me to, you know, try to do my best.
Okay, thank you. I will move on to the lightning round, uh thirty second responses, and it goes by fast. There's four questions. Uh, first is should schools test for learning disabilities?
Oh, this is such a tough one because now we're starting to creep into HIPAA. Uh, so okay, learning disabilities? No. But evaluate based on what needs might be needed? Sure. So there's a difference, right? So for example, when you look at neurodivergency, there are certain diagnoses in ADHD versus autism, et cetera. But ABA therapy, for example, the analytical behavioral therapy addresses a lot of similar ones. So rather than focusing on, oh, we should be testing for learning disabilities. Oh, okay, that's a wrap.
All right, second question, what more can the district do to support Safe Roots to School?
Sure, that's a good one. I think right now there's been such a good job done with the crossguards, for example. And it's also an experience for students and parents to be personable with someone who's who's physically there. Um, you know, kind of increasing the number of maybe those flashing lights, the yellow lights, that is very helpful, you know, being able to have. Um, the flags have been helpful, but in addition to that, you know, more presence, I would say that would be a short term solution and then a long term solution, you know, as could be fit.
Okay, the third one, what can the district do to ensure equitable access to transportation?
Yeah, so I think the the district does a very good job of understanding where each household is at, doing that with transportation as well. And then being able to implement something that would be similar to the financial, you know, evaluation that's done prior to each school year.
Okay, and the last of the thirty second response questions. How should LGBTQ students be protected and supported in our schools? For example, how are trans student needs met?
That's a great idea. So I think one of the solutions that we've been seeing across the board, not just within districts, is um, you know, the all gender bathroom being an option. And then also education is so important because you mentioned bullying, you know, this is a part, if people don't understand someone else, it's hard to be compassionate toward them. And so being able to increase that understanding compassion.
All right, thank you. So that concludes the lightning round. And you will now have one minute to make a closing statement.
Sure. So I am going to start off right off the bat and say I am not a picket fence mother. Okay? I have seen some stuff. And as a result of having seen some stuff, I understand how important it is for community and how important it is for um even people like me who maybe aren't picket fence to feel included within community. And that kind of inclusion, that kind of collaboration is something that not only is just, you know, good for people to put their, provide their input within the community, but also, you know, just as a collective, it's good for the mental health of the, you know, the teachers, the students, the parents who are ultimately, we're all supporting the students, right? And so it's hard to, um, it's hard for a tree to provide healthy fruit if the roots themselves are not healthy. And so being able to, you know, kind of really unify that community level. And I've done that through, so for example, PTO, being able to be, you know, present grassroots on the ground and um, you know, kind of interactive with parents and community alike. You know, I think that that's kind of what I bring to the table.
Well, thank you so much um for attending and answering our questions. And this concludes our our interview. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. We will now transition to discussion. I'll bring Martin up.
Uh, while we are, hold on. So while we transition to the uh private discussion and while we clear out everyone that's not a voting member, et cetera. I just wanted to let everybody know that there were a few other races that we considered doing that we were considering for this session, but ultimately, but our ultimately, we are not going to be endorsing in these races because only one candidate filed filed and therefore they will not be on the ballot. Uh, Mid Peninsula Open Space District Ward Three, Ted Sears, the incumbent, and he was the only person that filed. Santa Clara, uh, Santa Clara Unified School District Trustee Area Seven, which includes part of the some of southeastern southwest, uh, southeastern Sunnyvale, yes. Uh, that's Bonnie Lieberman is the incumbent. She actually reached out to me earlier this year about one about an endorsement. However, we are not going to be endorsing in this race because she was the only candidate who filed and therefore is will will not be on the ballot. Uh, also Sunnyvale School District, there were two, there were two trustee areas up for election this year. Uh, in trustee area two, the incumbent is is it Isabel Tubas Flamarich. And in trustee area four, there's no incumbent, but the candidate running is Peggy Shen Brewster. In both cases, uh, no other candidate filed, therefore they therefore they'll be elected and the and the races will not be on the ballot. So again, all of those races we would normally consider for for endorsement. However, again, only one candidate filed, the races will not be appearing on the ballot. And speaking personally, I'm quite happy about who's getting elected. So uh, yay. Okay, are we good for discussion?